That on December fourth, five hundred thousand dollars was appropriated out of the fund balance, which is not sufficient for this project. And so the purpose tonight is to learn, for the council to learn more about what the project is, and then there can be some discussion about how the council wants to proceed. So Mark, go ahead.
Awesome. Oh, there. My voice always carries in this.
I was just going to mention, just our consultant was not able to join us. I think the whole east coast is being hit by this storm. So, but Mark and Robbie are here, and I'll let you guys introduce yourself for our new counselors. That'd be great.
Yeah, go ahead Robbie if you want.
Hi, I'm Robbie Barabee. I'm the general manager of... How's that? Good? I'm Robbie Barabee. I'm the general manager of Norway Savings Bank Arena and now Ingersoll Turf Facility. I think I know some of you here. Nice to meet everyone that I haven't yet.
Mark Goslin, Executive Director of Community Partnerships and Sports Tourism for the city of Auburn. Oversee the Norway Savings Bank Arena facility with Robbie as well as Ingersoll Turf Facility, as well as handle all the community relationships we have and all the people who are generous enough to support the facility and also the city recreation department as well. Mayor, City Council, thank you very much for the time. We're greatly appreciative of it. I want the talking points tonight are just to provide a quick little agenda and try to respect your time. I know you guys got a busy night ahead of you. A little history around the rink two, rink two side of the facility. When the, when the original construction was done, there was a cement slab poured on rink number one. Rink number two is actually a dirt floor. That dirt floor is, is, you know, Robbie will talk to the kind of specifics of it, but in general scheme of things, it becomes a cement, basically a cement slab when we freeze it and then we can freeze on top of it and skate on it. So at the very beginning part of the project, when the building was built 10 years ago, it's crazy that we're celebrating 10 years, which is great. The cement slab was poured on, on rink one, the dirt floor on rink two. You're supposed to, you're supposed to take that out every three years. The first management group before I took the job as the general manager didn't do that. When we came in and we noticed that they, that first management group didn't do that, so we, we did it to, to be proactive with trying to maintain it. And then when we did, we found some inconsistencies with the floor at that time, which was five years ago. And I'm going to let Robbie speak to the deficiencies.
I'm sorry, just to make sure. You took out the dirt floor.
No, took out the ice to maintain the dirt floor. So basically every three years.
They've never taken the ice out?
Correct. And we haven't taken it out since. So we took it out, we took the ice out once just to see what was underneath there and what was going on. Because you have to do that because moisture and, moisture and rain and water do a lot of different funky things when it's frozen. So we took it out to maintain it and see what was going on. So that was five years ago and now we're at this point and I'll have Robbie talk.
Yeah, so when we took rink two out five years ago, some of the things that we noticed, and we actually had a consultant come over and, and look at it with us, all the pipes are not level underneath that sand or within that sand. They, they are all are not level underneath that sand or within that sand. They, they are all wavy, some being two and a half inches below the sand, some of them being a quarter of an inch below the sand. And that alone causes a lot of inconsistencies in the cooling of the floor. There'll be really cold spots, warmer spots, which create heaving. The other issues that we have is it's supposed to be a clean, fine sand or a stone dust to pack and make a really level surface. And there's half inch to three-quarter inch gravel mixed in there, which was the cheaper way to go, I think. It, it's more of like a driveway mix, is what I would call it. And what that hap, what that causes is air pockets. You, you have gravel in there. It's not filling all the gaps perfectly. Anywhere where there's an air pocket creates frost, and frost will grow, frost will push that ice up. We have spots right now that we are having trouble keeping ice on because the floor is heaving so high. The ice gets thinner to keep it level. We also have some erosion around the header pipe that we noticed, where when we create that, you know, cement slab out of that sand, we saturate it with water until it puddles, and that's when you turn your pipes on and you start freezing it, and it freezes, freezes hard before you create the skatable ice on top. We were having water actually running around the header pipe, so there's big gaps in there, which also create lots of frost and create kind of an unstable ground. So, those are just a couple of the issues there that are really kind of concerning to me and concerning to the longevity of the floor. We want to be able to control, you know, when we take it out, and unfortunately, like, I think we might be in a situation where we might be surprised in having to take it out, so.
Yeah, and to piggyback on that is, you know, we want to be proactive versus reactive with these types of situations. A lot of it is just trying to get ahead of it, especially when you have a, a building that size and the amount of revenue and income that comes in through that facility. We want to try to minimize the impact of that. Anytime you do a large project like that, you have to look at how that's gonna minimize, or how that's gonna affect your whole operating budget. And with us, you know, talking to the consultants, when they put it back in, they made the recommendation that said, if you take this back out, the recommendation is to put a cement slab in. And we are at that point, five years from now, that, you know, we're at that point to try to consider that, because there are some, during the summer, some unsafe conditions with the ice not freezing in certain spots. We've had Assistant City Manager Brian Wood come over and take a look at those spots. And allowing us to do it now with the consultants that we're working with, they would be, we would be able to time it this year after the National Collegiate Roller Hockey Association National Championship happens, when the ice is covered, when the rink two is covered, rink one's out. After that championship, we'd be able to go right into the construction phase of it, put rink one back in ice-wise, and then operate normally as we would during the summer. And we would just have the construction going on, on rink two. And the consultant said, what, eight weeks?
Yeah, we would be, we would be back to two sheets by August first, no problem.
Yep. And then within that, within that price point that we shared and we asked for, is not just the construction of the ice sheet. It also includes a new board system. It also includes a new netting system. It also includes a new rubber, which is eliminating a lot of CIP projects that are gonna be coming down the road three or four years from now. So, we would be eliminating with this project future CIP projects. We wouldn't have to come, come to the city council during budget season to ask for these, to get done. And then also, from a standpoint too, when you have a cement slab like that, you're just adding twenty-two thousand square feet of new convention space, new space to be used for non-hockey events. Everything from conventions to trade shows to flea markets, if we wanted to get into flea market. When you have a flat space like that, twenty-two thousand square feet is a lot. And in, and in the state, and not just this area, but in the state, there's not a lot of convention space. Just in this area alone, with losing the Ramada Inn, there's not a lot of convention space. So, we'd be able to take some opportunity in creating some nice convention space. And when it comes to setting up for the RV show, we're not asking ten public works guys to come down to help us put the floor down. We're now just melting the ice on rink two and rink one and just letting them go, and then we can put the ice back in, and we're off and running. So, we wanted to provide just a little more feed, some more information in regards to why that price tag is the way it is. We're trusting some great people in the industry. Robbie goes to NARS every year and makes connections within the industry for this reason. And all the people that we are connecting with about this are all people that are very well trusted in the industry across the country. And the additional funding would go a long way in regards to not just helping us now, but allowing us to create opportunities for the future at the, at the facility.
So, for the new counselors, just an update. So, their initial request to the counselors when we had our discussion on fund balance, it was for a million dollars for this project. Council allocated five hundred thousand, and with the, thought that the additional five hundred could go through the CIP process for additional funding in the future. What that does, though, is it puts us behind on the schedule. So, to get the schedule in place that they were just referring to, we would need to move forward with a contract, get that in order, so that we can get this completed. And so, not knowing whether or not the additional five hundred thousand would be coming in, really puts the project off. So, the question, you know, that would be before the council is, would, would you consider remove, allocating the additional five hundred thousand from fund balance and apply it to this project? Or we put this project off and allow for the CIP to take place, and then this, if it's approved through CIP, then this would, we're a year, year behind on this project. And it would create the things, you know, the issues that, that they're seeing, obviously, by, by allowing it to, to stay as it is. So, that, that's the position we're at. The council can discuss, and we'll answer any questions.
Yes.
What is the, what is the fund balance at, percentage of budget?
You still left some funding within the fund balance. This would go below the max percentage.
So, it's still above fourteen percent?
So, it would still be, yes, it would still be above your, your minimum, your, I'm sorry, your minimum, the maximum. It would go slightly below that.
And then, question for Mark.
Yes.
Guesstimate, not gonna hold you to the quote, I know, but in revenue, how much more do you think you could generate in three years from now? Obviously, it's not gonna happen next year because you gotta prepare and all that, but in the next year or two, three years, how much more revenue do you think you could generate?
I think conservatively, if we had another cement slab, and I mean conservatively, probably fifteen thousand a year.
Fifteen thousand a year?
A year. So, if you, that allows us to grow the RV show. It allows us to grow the home show. It allows us to grow all the shows, because right now, we can't grow the shows, because we have to keep the ice in rink two, or we have to pay for people to come in to cover up rink two, right? So, this, this allows us to be able to be flexible with, with what Robbie needs if we get a large show, a concert, or different things like that, that allows us to, it allows us the flexibility to do so.
Other questions? Counsel Gary?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Seems like every year, every couple of years, this keeps popping up, and we keep, I thought, allocating money. So, what happened in the past years? Why hasn't it been done before now?
I'm not sure in which parts, I, we've never asked. I don't remember us asking for money for, for the cement slab for rink two before. This is the first time that we've kind of come across the table with it. I think we've asked some funds for different things.
It was in the, it was in your CIP plan.
Yes.
So, the five-year plan, but it never came forward as a recommendation to approve the funding. So, but it was in the five-year plan. I mean, I think, you know, Counsel Walker, while we talk, be able to go back and actually state, this is why he wanted that rink done in the first place, because knowing that we would be back in this place here now, but...
Counsel Walker?
Thank you. Absolutely. I'm on board. We should have done it ten years ago. Frogs get in my throat. It's awful.
It's okay. I'm, I'm emotional about it too, Leroy. Don't worry about it.
It's unreal, though, but we should have done it, and we didn't do it because of certain things that got in the way. But what he's asking right now definitely would make this rink a hell of a lot better, and, and would let them in the future move a lot further ahead in, in things that they would like to do and need to do in order to make this rink really prosper for this city. So, I'm in agreement, and, and I know the young man is not fibbing about anything. He's talking about, I battled with that for years and years at the Ingersoll Arena. And when you stop playing with frost, frost will cause you injuries. People can easy take out a knee, break, you know, even break a blade on a skate, and I've seen it happen. So, I, I know that truly after, we did it for twenty years, and we just fought that battle year after year after year, and we had injuries. And, and our city also paid for some of them injuries. So, I hope we can move forward with this.
And can I, can I just share one more thing, too, in regards to continuing operating costs? If we continue to put a Band-Aid on this, right, we are gonna continue to have to pay money to take the ice out, fix issues every three years. With a cement slab, you don't have to do that. It's, you don't have to maintain that dirt floor underneath. So, by just putting a Band-Aid on it, it doesn't necessarily free us up to possibly just call it good and say, okay, great, yeah, we're good for next year. But every three years, we are, we will have to revisit this. And, you know, heaven forbid, nothing really, really serious goes, goes wrong. So, I just wanted to put that in there.
Yeah, I, I had a question. Thank you, guys, for presenting on this. I had two questions. One was just diving into that comment a little bit deeper. Do you have a, any sense of what the cost savings would be? Obviously, I understand every three years to dig it up, but are there annual, like, is it more expensive to maintain rink two versus rink one? What would those cost savings look like annually?
Absolutely. So, to put, to put rink on a, to put ice on a concrete slab is about ten thousand dollars between man-hours, paint, water. And to put it in a sand rink, you have to take out all the contaminated sand, re-level, and then it takes about, you know, three weeks for it to thaw, just to get to that point. It's about thirty thousand dollars to put in ice on a dirt slab. So, yeah, it's significantly cheaper to do that, that three-year maintenance, or what will be one-year maintenance when we have a concrete.
And then, just a quick follow-up to that. I was just looking further down at some notes here about the Norway Savings Bank fiscal year budget for last year, and I was just curious. I'm looking at rental income of seven hundred thousand dollars. Is that, is that mostly full ice rental? Will this increase the ice rental capacity of the facility? I understand it could increase trade shows and other indoor facilities. Are you guys already maxed out with ice rental, or will this affect that?
I mean, it's tough to, I mean, we are, when you look at ice rental, everyone wants the prime times of, you know, how, you know, can we get one o'clock to eight o'clock at night, and we only have, you know, certain spots for that. And we are maxed out of that, that timeframe. So, this doesn't necessarily correlate with maxing out ice time. It's more of the non-ice events that it really allows us the opportunities to grow, which, which we don't have right now.
Counsel Collins?
Mark, Robbie, thanks. This is very helpful. Like, so I just want to summarize if we're, if, Robbie, you mentioned, what I understand is a twenty thousand dollar savings annually in maintenance on top of an estimated fifteen thousand dollar gain. So, we're talking thirty-five, right?
Yeah, and that's not taking into account anything we would be fixing when we do take rink two out, because those pipes in, in sand are gonna continue to move, especially when you thaw it, that those pipes shrink and expand significantly, and, and that's why they're not really where they're supposed to be anymore.
Great. And I just saw that I'm understanding, catching up on the, the original five hundred thousand that you have done. Is that sufficient to cover, even if that is, even that sufficient to cover repairing the gravel if we chose not to go further than that?
I, I think it would, I think it'd be stretching a little bit. It's, it's tough, that's a tough thing to ask, because we don't know the problem. Once we get in there, there could be more problems that we don't even know about, you know, how that's, how that's affecting the header pipe and all those different things.
Phil, can you enlighten us here? Because I, I don't think that the five hundred thousand dollars that was appropriated could be used to repair the facility. It was, it was appropriated for a specific purpose. So, I think to Counsel Collins' question, you know, if they thaw this and they gotta do fifty thousand dollars worth of repairs, that's a different issue.
Yeah, it would come back before you to reallocate those funds, and then we would, we would have, again, we would not know what that, we'd need to have it assessed, and you wouldn't know until you took the ice out. So, so we really wouldn't have a hard number. It just, that five hundred thousand could certainly go towards it, and then they would take it out, assess what needs to be done, come back before you, and either would be covered in that, you could reallocate that five hundred, or I don't believe it would be more, but it would be within that number. But it's still hard to tell. We ran into multiple issues before, and they were able to identify and chase down some issues where there were certain things that weren't connected. And, you know, there was, you know, it was good that we had done it. Should have done it within three years, but, but it was good that we did it, because it did identify some other issues when they originally connected some of the cooling that takes place within those pipes that weren't even connected and they were dead-ended. So, so there was a lot that was discovered then. I don't think we'll see those again, because they went through that. But now, it's just about, how much would it take to actually bring all that soil in? And it's not something that you can just take a piece of equipment in and do it. It's, it's a lot of handwork.
It's pretty delicate, actually.
Yeah.
And then, one thing that I do also, if you're thinking about what we're gonna do with the current set of rink, with the current set of rink boards, the community is always looking for an outdoor space to, to skate, whether it's flooding a certain field or flooding a different part of Auburn or whatever. We would then be able to repurpose these boards that we currently have in rink two, because we're getting a new set with this current installation, is, you know, Robbie and I were talking about, could we find a unique place where we could put those boards up for the community and have an outdoor skating rink, and have a real outdoor skating rink, not just a flooded piece of grass, you know? You know, could we put some thought behind this and, and have a nice community outdoor rink during the winter time?
Any other questions from the council?
Thank you, thank you for your time. We greatly-
Don't go away when I go.
No, I know, I know.
So, I have a couple other questions for you. So, you know, the city manager said that, so if I understand this correctly, if we appropriate the five hundred thousand dollars at this point, the project could happen this summer, if not, and it was approved in the CIP plan, it'd be the next year. What's the risk to this failing, right? Because I heard you guys talking about some problems with it. Are you at a point where you could have some failure that means you gotta close this rink because it's not safe? And, and tell me a little bit about what those conditions might be.
Yeah, that's absolutely a possibility. It would be this summer. What happens is some of the cooling pipes have pulled off the boards, so we're not getting the proper cooling right up against the boards, which creates gaps. And in the wintertime, the building cold, cold enough, so the, you know, the boards are actually cold. But in the summertime, they soak up all that heat from the outdoors, and then we get receding ice, and that can be really dangerous. And if it gets any worse than it is now, I would be really uncomfortable letting people skate on it on, in certain conditions. So, definitely, something we have to think about.
Yeah, I'm assuming then, once, if that happened and you had to close it, it'd be closed until you could put a cement floor in. Is that correct?
Correct, correct. And we don't know the timing of, if it happens without, without us planning it, we're not necessarily sure how long that would be out.
Sure. And perhaps the city manager could help us out here, for those of us that are new regarding the fund balance. So, to, to Counsel Milk's point about the fourteen percent, I understand that, and I, the fourteen percent that was talked about at the previous meetings tied to the 2022 audit plan. Are we assuming that when the 2023 audit is completed, there will be also additional increase in the fund balance beyond the fourteen percent?
Yes, it'll probably be greater than what the council, this council had for funding available. I mean, it's all still, you know, unofficial numbers, but, but I think it'll be, you had right around two, two-point-one, I think, million in the fund balance. around 2.1, I think, million in the fund balance from 2022, FY22. We believe it'll probably be closer to 3 million for FY23.
So I think for the council, I think what, we're not obviously going to make any decision tonight, but I think what you need to be thinking about here is, if you recall, the city manager, we had some brief discussion at the orientation about the workers' comp fund, and it's sort of a similar thing, right? There was a request by the city administration for a million dollars. It seems that while the half a million dollars helps, it's not going to be sufficient to cover the needs there. So I think what people need to be thinking about here is, what's the balance in this and what's the priorities, right? Because we have the workers' comp issue we need to think about, we have the Norway Savings Bank. I know some of the counselors raised other priority issues when you were discussing spending funds from the fund balance. So we need to think about that, and what does that mean relative to appropriating any additional funds here in the near term? And then I guess the final question I would have is, what's the date by which the council needs to act if the project is to go forward this coming summer?
Robbie, do you?
I'll look to you guys to know about the, because we have to lock in the contractor. I think that's been our biggest discussion, right?
Yeah. You know, I have a feeling they're going to be giving me a call tomorrow to see how, to see how this went. They're definitely looking for it sooner than later. We've been kind of holding them off as long as we can. I know that they want to come out as soon as, like, January 1st to come see the building, you know, if this is going to happen, and put boots on the ground and kind of get ready for this. So they're looking for an answer soon.
And I think the nice thing too is, even though they've been pressing, they've also been very accommodating too at the same time. They're very familiar with city projects, they're very familiar with municipal buildings, they're very familiar with these types of things. So they understand the process, but in order to get us in that time, into that time slot, they do need to know ahead of time, just because they'd be spending a lot of time with us in that eight-week period to be here.
Mr. Mayor, if I, just one follow-up question related to your comments about helping me think through in prioritization. Mark, you mentioned that some of the 500,000, if allocated fully, would go towards CIP? And just even just some estimates of what portion is required for the slab versus, you know, not necessarily tonight, but just to have that as information in case we needed to reduce.
Are you, just for clarification, are you asking the amount of money that we would be saving in CIP for future years? Or are you talking about money that would be allocated this year for CIP?
Allocated this year for the CIP, for the boards and netting, in case that had to be postponed. So I think perhaps a little clarification, and you guys can correct me if I'm wrong. The 500,000 has been allocated. The discussion at the prior council meeting was to appropriate an additional 500,000 through CIP in the next year's budget. So that money would not even be available in time to do this project. If you want to do it this coming summer, that route isn't going to work, because by the time you go through your budget process, you won't get the money in time to lock this in. So I think to Counsel Calhoun's point, if you're thinking about that approach where you use 500,000 from CIP, it's a 2025 project, because you need to allocate the additional half a million dollars by the time that came available, and you could work with a contractor, you're into the next summer gap. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And I was thinking more additional fund balance, but if 500,000 wasn't available because we needed to prioritize for multiple projects, could a portion of that still get us a cement slab? And boards be done through the CIP process? That's a. Yeah, so I think that that's a good question, and so if I'm understanding you, could we take the $500,000 that's appropriated now, would that get the slab and then appropriate for the netting and the boards and the other piece of it through the CIP? And I guess the two parts of that question, what's the split amongst that? And is it more money if you don't do it all at the same time?
It is more money if you don't do it at the same time. I think just the cement slab, correct me wrong, is 900,000?
955 for the, for the concrete slab, yeah. And we have to take all the boards and glass and netting out to do this job, so that's kind of where the timing comes in.
Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Sorry. Mr. Mayor, I know you had talked about the contractor coming in at the beginning of the year. Have they expressed any idea about how much this project would possibly cost? I know there's some unforeseen stuff, because obviously the rink is still there, but have they given any indication that would help us come to a better idea?
Other than the quote that they gave us for the job, no. Without seeing it, they haven't given us any information on any changes to that.
But it's fair to say, at this point, I think based on the prior discussion, you're estimating that the million dollars would cover the cost of the project, correct?
Yes.
So counsel, if we were to tee this back up for you, I guess what we would like to know is, what further information would you like to have? What timeline on this coming back before you? Obviously, we're talking about moving sooner than later or getting a definitive decision that, no, it's not, and we'll be able to push this off. But if there's more information you'd like to hear to make this decision, and that might be what the mayor was referring to as, what are some of those other priorities we might have, then happy to have that conversation. We can talk about that. What I can also have, if we were to prepare this for an order at a future meeting, we would have the, you know, exactly how much from the fund balance below the 14% would be allocated. You would have that information before you made your decision. We'd make sure that was in the council packet.
Yeah, I think it would be very helpful to understand that, what that number would be, and also what that number would be if the additional funds are appropriated for the workers' comp balance as well. And perhaps also what we believe the time would be, that it would be below 14, because we're going to get another audit and it's going to push back up above 14%.
Counsel Milk?
Yeah, two questions, well, statement and a question. One is, I think Mr. Goslin was being conservative on his $15,000, and I think that number's going to be higher, but.
I think so too.
Yeah. I think, to me, the number one priority is workman's comp, and this is two. But is it possible to allocate the workman, the fund balance, and then put it in the CIP and refund the fund balance with the CIP so that they're paying for it, so that they're, it's not fund balance money, but it's CIP and they pay through operations?
I don't think that's probably the best approach, only because what you don't want to do is, if I understood you correctly, you're going to have that overage again, as the mayor mentioned, in the next few months. And so it just means you would have less to allocate when you get your audit. You know, and I'm hoping you'll see that probably by, I think, we're hoping by October rather than by November. But you'd get that, you'd get that sometime in October. So you'd have a little less that you'd have available to allocate above and beyond the 14%. If I'm understanding.
You can't borrow it tomorrow to replenish what you gave them today.
Yeah, I would recommend not doing that.
So I'm in general, I'm in, as long as we get the workman's comp taken care of, number one, I'm in favor of this.
Counsel Whitey.
I would like to ask the finance director to give us a real ballpark on the next year. I know she can't give an exact number, but I agree with you. I think it's going to be a pretty good number, which will help us feel more confident about this. The other issue is the audit committee kind of gently nudged the auditors to try and do the audits faster, but there aren't enough auditors out there, and it's really hard for municipalities to even get people to give proposals on audits. So we're kind of at their mercy, and it's frustrating, but that's the world we're in.
I also do want to clarify and answer a question about a CIP item that we are putting in for this year is, the total project is 1.1 million, and we are putting some money in, $155,000 into this year, but that's just because the company's willing to push out that money into the next fiscal for us, so that we knew we had a tight budget, and they helped us get here with this. So, yeah, so I mean, I just, I didn't want, I didn't want that curveball to be out there, you know, have you see it and be like, what's going on? And I do, we really do appreciate you taking an honest look at this because it will be extremely helpful for us to move to Libero's point. The building itself 10 years ago was a hot political topic, right? I think now this facility is an iconic facility in New England. And when, you know, Norway Savings Bank sees this, right? I mean, they signed on for another 10 years to be a significant naming rights sponsor to us. Robbie goes to NARS all the time, and they talk about our numbers and what we do and how we perform, and a lot of them are blown out of the water, but what we do with a two-sheep ice facility. And this, I think this will just help us continue to move in that positive direction in what we're doing and how we can continue to make this city proud with the building and still have it be that iconic facility that people look to and come to. And it's going to be great, you know, come spring when we have, you know, 60 roller hockey teams coming from all across the country to play roller hockey at our facility. Not one of those teams is going to be from this state, not one. Everyone, they're going to be flying in. We have 400 room holds that are from here to Portland, just to accommodate the lodging needs for this tournament. And I think that's the reputation this building has now kind of earned, and it deserves, right? So, yeah, so thank you for your consideration. I mean, we're greatly appreciative of the time.
Any other questions from the council?
Not a question, but I, just so the council knows, I, in general, I thank you guys. I'm supportive of this. I think the bones of what you guys are trying to do makes sense. From a construction standpoint, it makes sense. From a cost-saving standpoint, it makes sense. I think I understand what that facility means to the city. Personally, I want to dive a little bit into, and I would imagine we have access to this, but like the P and L statements from that facility over the last three years. I'd like to know if you guys are profitable or not. It doesn't mean you have to be in order to, you know, get this money allocated, but, you know, in my mind, if you guys are making money every year, that's even more of a reason to kind of approve this, you know, but.
Yeah, so I think, big picture, for those that haven't looked into this, I think on an operating basis, the arena is making a profit every year. That profit gets transferred to the city to help offset bond payments for which the operating profits at this point don't, aren't high enough to cover that. You know, if they, there's a sense this is a revenue center, so they'd have their own P and L, but they're not at a point where they can break even at the bottom line, or certainly not in a point that they can be by themselves taking on additional bonds for improvements like this. So if I characterize that correctly.
Yeah, so the money that we've earned over the past, past three years, we've made money at the building, but that does go to the debt service of, you know, of the building.
I guess to clarify, I just, I'd like to see what kind of growth you guys have experienced as opposed to profitability.
Oh, yeah, for sure.
Because I also understand the benefits that the community are in lots of things other than ice rental. It's hotel rooms, it's restaurants, I get all that. So, yeah, thank you, guys.
Awesome, thank you.
So, yeah, you don't have what you need, and is the sense of the council that we'd be expecting to have further discussion of this at the January 6 meeting with a proposed Because that's the next time we will meet, and if.
The second?
The second, yeah. Yeah, second, right?
Is that?
Yeah, so that's, okay, great. Anything further on this?
That's helpful for us too as well. And we'll share that with the consultants.
Yeah, thanks very much. So this will conclude the workshop, and we'll reconvene at 7 o'clock in the council chamber.
Happy holidays, everyone.
Thank you.
The December 18th, 2023 meeting of the Auburn City Council is called to order. Please join us in the pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
If we could have the counselors introduce themselves, starting on the right with Counselor Gary.
Good evening. I'm Belinda Gary. I'm a city counselor at large.
Uh, Rick Whiting, uh, Ward One, City Councilor.
Tim Cowan, Ward Two, City Council.
Steve Melks, Ward Three, City Council.
Jeff Harmon, Mayor.
Ben Weisner, City Councilor, Ward Four.
Leroy Walker, Ward Five.
Adam Platt, City Council at Large.
Uh, Phil Kroll, City Manager.
Thank you. The first item on the agenda is consent items. These are re, uh, routine appointments of constable and civil service, uh, process servers and the local sealer of weights and measures. process servers, and the local sealer of weights and measures. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilor Gary and seconded by Councilor Walker. Vote will be by show of hands.
Opposed? The motion's adopted. The next item is minutes of the December fourth, twenty twenty-three regular city council meeting. Are there any corrections? Seeing none, is there a motion to accept the minutes?
Motion to accept. Second.
Motion by Councilor Walker, seconded by Councilor Whiting. The vote will be by show of hands. All those in favor? Opposed? The motion is adopted. The next item is communications. The first item under communications is from the city clerk, advising that there will be a special election for the Ward four city council seat on April ninth, twenty twenty-four. No nomination papers were filed for the regular election. Nominations are now open, and you can contact the city clerk's office if you would like to pull nomination papers for this seat. The election will be held on April ninth. Because of the hundred-and-twenty-day requirement, we were not able to have this scheduled for March fifth, when we'll have the presidential primary election. The next item under communications will be mayoral appointments. These are appointments made by the mayor that don't require confirmation by the city council. So I will be appointing to the Appointment Committee, Councilor Platt, Councilor Gary, Councilor Whiting. To the Auburn Public Library Board, Councilor Whiting. To the Auburn City, excuse me, Auburn Sewer District Board of Trustees, Councilor Milt. For the Auburn Water District Board of Trustees, this is a presumptive seat for the mayor. I'll be assuming that seat, and that will not take effect until January first. Museum L.A. or the Maine Mill, Councilor Whiting. To the Auburn School Committee, Councilor Platt. And to the Sustainability and Natural Resources Management Board, Councilor Cowan. That brings us to our first open session of the evening. Members of the public are invited to speak to the city council about any issue that is not on tonight's agenda. If you would like to speak to the council, please approach the podium, provide your name and address, and try to limit your comments to three minutes. Mr. Campbell, to the podium?
No, right up here. Yeah. Yeah.
Dan Campout, two ninety-four Hotel Road. First and foremost, congratulations to the people who are up there. It's great to see what I see. And I know a lot of you, and you're all great people. And I know that your intent, as my intent is, I'm here to serve. I was brought to this earth to serve, as you are here to serve. I'm here for a very special reason. I was given a second chance three years ago. And I'm trying to keep my promise. And it's not by mistake. At this time in history, being part of Auburn since nineteen fifty-two, to see what I see, it's a shame. It's a travesty, and it's not going to get any better. But I've done my research, and anybody, anybody after the speech, and maybe other people who would like to speak, anybody on that council that would like to spend the morning in cabb- cabbousing the streets with me of Lewiston and Auburn at four-thirty in the morning, it may bring light to what I'm about to say. I do know that you're aware of what's out there for homelessness. I know that you had a little meeting before, and I know that, you know, the mayor has made it very clear as one of his platforms to deal with the homelessness. I'm here to deal with the homelessness too, and I have for the past two and a half years. I've been walking the streets for the first year at night and in the morning. And I finally said to God, who brought me there, I said, "What do you want me to do with all this?" He said, "Jump in." And I have. I've jumped in for the past year. And I know what I see is the truth. I know what is the way. I know what is the truth, and I know what is the life. And I'm going to need your help to make a difference to what we have here in the city of Auburn and the city of Lewiston concerning homelessness. I need your help. I am here to petition your heart. I'm here to petition the truth. I'm not here to talk about what we could do, what we should do, about the grants that might happen out there, or what maybe we got the housing. We got a lot of housing out there. You all know that. I know that. And there's lots of reasons you can put roadblocks up there. But I know that my Lord, Savior, they're not roadblocks. There's only solutions. And there's one solution. It's us coming together as a community at large and making a difference in these homelessness. They're not here. They don't want to be homeless. You know, there's a big fallacy out there. And I've heard it so much, and I'm so glad I've walked the streets to see it. For the longest time, and I'm ashamed. I'm ashamed because I was one of them. I thought the same way. And I know it's not the truth now. I know what the truth is. If you want to walk in those shoes, please join me some morning. But the people who stand on the corner that you see panhandling out there, everybody thinks they're panhandling, they're making all this money, and they're going off to their little village, their little apartments, and... No. Want me to show you where those panhandlers live? I got them on my phone. I'm glad to bring you to where they live. Their beautiful bed is a concrete sidewalk. If they're lucky. They have air conditioning of eleven degrees out there. If they're lucky. I get calls nine to ten at night. People crying, full adults. They're in their sixties. They're in their seventies. "Please, please, find me a place to stay. It's too cold for me out here." And is that the exception? No! I get it every day. I start at four-thirty in the morning, and I'm not done yet. And I have other people, great people, who are helping. We have a handful, and now we have a big bushel of people helping who want to make a difference. You want to find out what type of models? Take a... Look at Finland's model. Look at the countries that don't have a homeless problem. Look at their model. And it's always the same common thread. "We have to have shelter." I don't need shelter for these people and the homeless people over there. I don't need it in the end of January, at the beginning of February. We need it now. We didn't, you know, we need it a month ago. Lot of talk of what might happen. We missed the boat. We missed the boat, but we don't have to sit there and let that boat sail. We can take charge. Captain, oh captain, you are my captains. You guys can make a difference. And it can't be a month from now. Look at today. Do you know how many people we put in a hotel today that are homeless? Over twenty people in a hotel room today. And it hasn't even got cold yet. What about that eighty-year-old man Gary, who was sleeping on the park bench in cold weather? And brought him to the hospital three times, and the hospital would call me to come get him at three in the morning, saying he's okay. How could we be so cruel to our elderly? How can we be so cruel to these homeless people? Oh, yeah, they're drug addicts. Yes, 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 they're drug addicts. Well, let me tell you about a couple of the drug addicts, so you know the truth. And then I'm going to close it down. I promise you. On one of the coldest days that we had, a woman named Heather, who usually sits on Sabbato Street, and you hear her screaming, "Ah!" And you go talk to her, and she's pretty lucid. And I ask her, "Why do you scream so much, Heather?" And she would explain what happened to her on the streets. And there was this gentleman, Josh, and I remember seeing him two or three times with her at like four-thirty in the morning, we're over in the bus station, we're sitting on the park bench over there. And Josh is a big guy, and he's just standing over Heather. And I said, you know, and Heather would say, "Hey, Dan, can you get me a lighter for my cigarettes?" And I'd say, "Sure." And I'd say, "Hey, Josh, you want to take a ride to the store with me?" So we'd go to the store. And I'd say, "Hey, Josh, what's your story, man?" I said, "You homeless?" He says, "Yeah." And I said, "How old are you?" He says, "Thirty-one." I said, "How long you been homeless?" He said, "Since I was seventeen." I said, "How come?" He said, "My old man used to kick the crap out of me every single day. I had black eyes. Your father, human services, walked in. Nothing ever changed for me. I had to get out, and I've been homeless ever since." Yeah, maybe he did a little part. Maybe he even did a little more than that. But I'm not going to, I am not going to judge his pain. So please, let's not judge people. Let's look at the solution. Let's get them shelter, then take what their issues are and create a better community, not just for the homeless, better community period. So again, I'm going to drop this. I invite anybody. My number is seven-one-three-three-nine-three-nine, and anybody who wants to come up with me anytime in the morning, any day, Monday through Sunday, please get ahold of me. I know that Phil would probably like to see me in church more than I do, but my church is out here right now. You know, this is what God has brought me. This is what my Savior has brought me, so... That's all I got to say. I don't know if it makes any sense to you, but it sure does to me. Please help me help them. Please. And remember one thing. If there's anything you heard me say, pain without hope is hopelessness, which leads to homelessness. There's a lot of pain without hope up there, my friends. Let's give them hope, please.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public that would like to address the council? If so, please approach the podium.
My name's Alex. I'm homeless. I don't have, I don't have an address. But today, I, well, for example, if homelessness, the biggest prob- the problem I have, I went over to a friend's house to stay last night, and at like two o'clock in the morning, this is like, you know, I've been sleeping on the streets or whatever, and one of those like cubbyholes or sidewalks or whatever. And I left really early this morning because the one thing she said to me was, she started like playing music really, really loud and banging around, and I hadn't slept for days, and I was just trying to sleep. And I was like, "Can you please just not play your music so loud?" And she said, "It's raining outside. Why don't you just go live outside?" And then so I left, and I went over to where I have a couple of friends who have a tent. And it was, the wind was whipping and stuff, and I get into the tent, and we're all in this big tent, and it was whipping so hard, and a big ass, oh, excuse me, a big tree broke and landed on top of the tents and wherever it was in there, and trapped some of us inside of it. And now that's their entire home. You know what I mean? That's the entire, everything that we, everything they owned, soaked, everything that they, where they slept, where their dog sleeps, and... That, they're like, that's a lucky place to be. You know what I mean? That's a lucky place because some people are like, I walked into the cubbyhole on Middle Street, and it's just like this little cutout cubbyhole where people like draw the pictures or whatever. And like, people, I have friends that are sitting there shivering and like with cardboard boxes and stuff. And like, I walk, these are my friends and stuff, like these people have, I'm also a drug addict, and they, um... I've died quite a few times on fentanyl abuse, and I've tried, you know, different things to fix that, but that's not what we're here for. The moral of the story is, I've had those complete strangers, those people that are sleeping in those cubbyholes and who are also drug addicts, give me Narcan, complete strangers that I've never met before saved my life. And so like, it's just important, I don't know, I think the biggest thing is that we don't know what to do. Because like, I could, I could work a job forty, fifty hours a week if I had one, if I would be willing to work. I just, right now, I'm working on my two forms. Some of us are in situations where we don't, I have, I need two forms of ID to get employed. I don't have either of those, and it's, for some reason, for me, it's very difficult to obtain those ones because of the rides and just the whole thing. But none of that, but if I, if I had them and I got a job, say, and I was working forty, fifty hours a week, and then I leave work, and it's raining or snowing outside, and my feet are soaked, and I have no place to go or no place to sleep, I don't know how I'm going to get up and work tomorrow. You know what I mean? So a lot of us get stuck in these situations where if we don't get into a program, like, yes, the substance abuse and homelessness, there has to be like, yeah, we have to have like a, there's a fine line between the two, and we have to have respect, there has to be a line of respect between the two because, yes, they bleed into each other, but they're not, they're not synonymous. They don't, they're not contingent on one another. Like, sometimes they are. Sometimes somebody's homeless because they're a drug addict and they choose that, but sometimes you're homeless because of whatever circumstances, and... And so there has to be a respect between the two. The only, the thing that I, I, we just, some of us are just stuck. Like, we don't have, we have, like, I don't have family that I can just call up and say, "Hey, can..." I have a hard time having family come get me to spend Christmas with them, for whatever reasons. And so a lot of times, it's, a lot of times, it's, it's a ruthless thing to be outside when, when it's very, very cold outside and everything's soaked. Like, today, my feet are wet right now. They're soaked. I have no way to dry them. If it wasn't for him putting us in a hotel, I would have no way to dry my feet. I mean, I know, you know what I mean? And so it's just like, there has to be some sort of like give, like, you know what I mean? Like, not like give, but there's some sort of like, if we set up a tent somewhere, most of the time we get harassed, and the cops tell us we have to take it down. Yeah, so it's just, there's no place to, there's no place to settle. And so we're just wandering around, probably too tired to work anyway. And if we did, it's just, I don't know. I don't, I don't know what to do to get, to stop being homeless, other than to get into a drug rehab, which would probably be beneficial to some and stuff like that. I'm working on that. It's a whole separate thing, but it's, I don't know.
Thank you very much for your comments. Is there anybody else that come up to the podium if you'd like to address the council?
Hi, my name is Beth. I am homeless. I wanted to start out by asking each person that is in this room tonight, how many of you ever had to move back in with mom and dad? Can you raise your hand? Council members? That right there is the difference between people that are on the street and people that have apartments and are able to do well for themselves. Some of us don't have places to go. We don't have family that will take us in. I really appreciated what Alex said. He brought up a lot of things. There, there is a way. There's got to be a way to help everyone. Personally, I lost my apartment, and I lost everything in it when I went to jail. I was arrested in March, and I was at Andrews Goggin County. I had a agreed-upon move-out date to be out of my apartment by April fifteenth. That way I wouldn't have an eviction on my record. I was having a hard time finding an apartment. I did have Section Eight at the time. Just trying to find apartments that will take Section Eight voucher, or they also have the bridging rental assistance voucher. Finding landlords that will accept that is very hard, and then you also have the price of the apartments that the vouchers will allow. Right now, I'm looking for a one-bedroom apartment for nine-hundred-and-fifty dollars a month. If you look on Marketplace, if you look on Craigslist, a one-bedroom apartment is going for like twelve-hundred right now. A two-bedroom's going for like fourteen-fifty. Unfortunately, when I was released out of jail, despite my efforts to... Um, unfortunately, when I was released out of jail, despite my efforts to advocate for myself at Andrews Goggan County Jail, um, the intensive case managers there, unfortunately, they are overwhelmed, they have more inmates than they can possibly handle. Um, you need more mental health workers at, at the jail, so that way they can put people that um, are being released into, at least to walk out of jail with a voucher. So that way they can start looking. There's also rooming houses available, there's not enough help. Um, I got out of jail in June and I had nowhere to go, so I lived outside the whole summer. And I was unfortunately arrested again and spent another three months at Andrews Goggan County. This time I made sure that I advocated for myself more, and I said, "We need to get this, this process rolling." Um, I knew that the intensive case manager had a huge caseload. Um, but I was able to speak up for myself, and there's many people that aren't able to. Um, I'm still outside, living outside currently. Um, I have gone to the shelter um, in New Auburn. Um, unfortunately, it didn't work out there. Um, I would really encourage the city council members to go to these places like Hope Haven, um, Calverly, Pleasant Street, um, walk amongst the homeless community. Um, we are homeless individuals, we are trying to survive every single day. Um, I know that a lot of people get, you know, that stigma of the drug addict. Um, these are people's sons, daughters. These are human beings. And um, like I said, the difference between one person that maybe is able to go home to their family members and others is that they don't have that support. Um, I just, I really wanted to show that, you know, a lot of us, we just don't have it. Um, and I'm really hoping that a plan can be made, there's, you know, like, the inside, there's plenty of empty buildings. Um, you know, I don't know how much it would cost to rent out the Walgreens on Union Street, right? Because that's completely empty. Um, Dan had beds that, you know, he, he's got donated. He's got like fifty beds. Why can't we come up with a solution? Um, why hasn't there been any funding? And it's disappointing to see um, the Twin Cities. Sometimes it seems like the homeless were more welcome in Auburn. In Lewiston, not so much. But it's also out of sight, out of mind. Um, Dan did ask if any of you guys would like to go up to some of the homeless encampments. I encourage you to do so. Please, meet us. We're not scary, we're not gonna, you know, do anything to hurt you, or we're not, most of us are not dangerous. Um, you know, start a conversation with someone. It might really surprise you. A lot of us have a lot of really great stories, some messed up ones, too. But.
Thank you very much for your comments. Is there anyone else in the public that would like to address the city council?
Hi, my name is Greg Whitney. I'm the president of the Pleasant Street Drop-In Center, located at the Universalist Church right down the road. Um, I really wanted to echo what Beth said and also what Alex said, they're both fairly regular guests of ours. Uh, we opened almost two years ago, um, originally as a warming center, and then as the need continued to get greater and greater, we decided to stay open year-round and become what we call a drop-in center. Um, we feed folks, we give them free clothing, free toiletries and things such as that. We're not doing anywhere near enough, but we're a hundred percent volunteer, so we're basically doing all that we can at this point. But what the city really needs is um, an overnight shelter and an emergency shelter, particularly on days like today. I could not imagine being homeless and living in a tent or living in a doorway um, on Court Street or Lincoln Street or Main Street or any place on a day like this. I mean, it was bad enough having a home and living in a home with no power, albeit, but, you know, we, we can rough it out. Um, but I, like I said, we, we do need, we need some sort of an emergency shelter, overnight shelter, and day shelter for days like this. Um, like I said, we're located at the church, we opened during COVID, so there was plenty of room, plenty of time. Now COVID is pretty much done, the church is getting busier and busier, more activities are going on, and the church is not available all the time that we need it. Um, ideally, we should have brought in a half a dozen employees and opened up the church's doors today and let fifty or sixty homeless folks come in and get out of this weather, but we, we just couldn't do it. Um, so um, I, I urge you to seriously consider um, doing whatever can be done to get some sort of a shelter in Auburn or Lewiston, but particularly Auburn, uh, to help the homeless folks. The, the problem's not gonna get any better, the only way to, to solve it, there's no short-term solution. Long-term, it's gonna take money from all levels of government. Um, and I think it needs to start, start with the local, and hopefully we can get some assistance from the state, so um, I urge your help. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to address the city council? Not seeing any, the open session will be closed, we'll move on. The next agenda item is unfinished business, there is no unfinished business. Following the next agenda item after that is new business. The first item is Order 17312182023. These are um, appointments to be confirmed by the city council uh, for boards and commissions, the members of which have been nominated by the mayor. Is there a motion?
Motion to move, second.
Moved by Counselor Walker to adopt the um, motion is written and seconded by Counselor Whiting. Discussion? No discussion, the vote will be by show of hands, all those in favor? All right, yeah, so, excuse me. So we'll accept public comment, is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on the um, proposed um, appointments to boards and commission? Not seeing any, the vote will be by show of hands, all those in favor? Oppose? The motion is adopted.
I move to adopt the following order, I believe we have in front of us, um, ordered.
If you would hold on just a moment, uh, Counselor Platt. So the next item will be um, items following from the executive session that was held earlier today in workshop. Um, Counselor Platt?
Yes, I move to adopt the following order. Ordered that the city manager be and hereby is authorized and directed to prepare in consultation with the city attorney and appropriate city staff, proposed zoning ordinance amendments that would serve to delay the applicability date of the amendments to the zoning ordinance evidenced by ordinance number two six dash one two oh four two oh two three and ordinance number two eight dash one two oh four two zero two three. Be it further ordered that such proposed zoning ordinance amendments be prepared in time for a first reading of them at the January second, twenty twenty-four city council meeting.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Been moved by Counselor Platt, seconded by Counselor Geary. Uh, is there any public comment? Not seeing any discussion by the council? Any discussion? No discussion, the vote will be by show of hands, all those in favor? Oppose? Vote is five in the affirmative, two in the negative, the motion is adopted. Is there any further new business?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I would like to propose a rescission of three items from the previous agenda. Uh, and the reason for this is um, there was no need to make appointments. Uh, these appointments at that time, these appointments are normally done by the sitting city council, which uh, is uh, duly authorized to make these appointments during their term. Uh, January one is in the term of this council, not the prior council. Uh, the tradition has been that, you know, councils make appointments that are within their purview. Um, secondly, um, you know, it's a longstanding practice that it's been done this way. Um, there may be just some disagreement about uh, the process, I won't get into that. Uh, the first one, they have to be done separately. I move to rescind Order 152 dash one two oh four two oh two three as adopted by the city council on December fourth, twenty twenty-three, reappointing Riley Bergeron to the planning board as a full member with a term expiration of oh one oh one twenty twenty-seven. And, and I should add, none of these are personal. So, oh, no comments about the qualifications of any of these people, just, it's a question of process.
So Counselor Whiting has moved to rescind Order 15212042023 as adopted by the city council on December four, twenty twenty-three, reappointing Riley Bergeron to the planning board as a full member with a term expiration of one one twenty-seven. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
So it's been seconded by Counselor Geary, is there public comment? Not seeing any discussion by the council?
I have a question.
Counselor Platt?
Yes, would their, would the application remain valid, or would this, would this process begin again?
So my understanding, and the clerk can clarify this if I, if I misspeak here. My understanding of the uh, order relating to um, the appointment process and the appointments committee is that each um, process must start fresh. And that these um, if any of these uh, appointments were to be rescinded, the positions on the planning board would be reposted, and um, the process would start anew. I, I would also point out, however, that within that order, um, the clerk um, is um, directed to contact any member of a board or a commission whose seat is being vacated to notify that, of that, and give them the opportunity to uh, apply. Is that correct? Um, further, I think Counselor Milk?
So on, going forward, is the planning board gonna be vacant then? Three spots?
Yes, it would be until these spots are filled.
So for the next month's meeting, there'd be a vacant, there's gonna be vacant planning board members? So, did, did the last appointment committee do anything improper or illegal uh, against any sort of city charter, policy, anything like that?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. And if we rescind these, then the planning board is going to be vacant next month when we have business in front of them?
I'm not sure when the meeting is, but there is a process that we would have to follow, uh, opening up the um, application period, um, and then posting the agenda, scheduling a meeting with the new appointment committee members. So not knowing when the planning board meeting is, there could potentially be three vacancies at the next meeting.
So if I, if I can clarify that, um, under the city ordinances um, at um, sixty, section two, four sixty-six, I, I agree with what the clerk just said in general about boards and commission, but there's specific language at uh, two dash four sixty-six related to the planning board that makes it clear that uh, current planning board members uh, remain in their position even if their term were to expire until uh, replacement is appointed. So a couple of comments on this. Um, the positions are not vacant now, they don't become, the, the terms end on January first, so they will become vacant on January second. Um, should the council um, not act in time for the first meeting, which I think is the ninth, um, the existing planning board members would continue on in their positions until they were either reappointed or somebody else was appointed. Counselor Milk? Uh, that under the, under that section that um, once the current, so there's three positions that um, expire on Ja, January first as the end of their term. So on January second, those three members would continue on in those positions um, just as they are today until such time as they're reappointed, or depending on who applies and what the appointment committee recommends to the council and what the council does, they'll continue on in those positions um, as they are today.
Mr. Mayor, I can affirm that that's a common practice with the housing authority. We had a, a commissioner, uh, Dick Gammon, who stayed on the board for about eight or nine months waiting for an appointment from city council. I was somewhat agitated about it, but I didn't make much noise. It was a long time ago, and Mr. Gammon was very kind and stayed around for a lot longer than he intended to. Um, and we wouldn't expect to go anywhere near that long.
I, I'm not sure about that provision, I don't know if Eric or.
So that, I, I can provide the actual language here. Section two dash four sixty-six, sub B, this is this, two, two dash four sixty-six is the provision that deals with membership appointment, removal terms and vacancies on the planning board. And in paragraph B, to quote, it says, "Regular members of the planning board shall be appointed by the city council for terms of three years. Such terms shall be staggered so that the term of not more than three members shall expire in any calendar year. Incumbent members of the planning board shall serve for the balance of their term and thereafter until their successors are appointed." So I, I think the counsel.
Does it indicate when you're supposed to appoint them? Or when, that anything improper was done by appointing them, the, the, to, ahead of, you know, in one meeting ahead of their term?
Well, I think that uh, there is no clear language on that, but I think, correct me if I'm wrong, Counselor Whiting, but I think that your point that you were making was that that's not been the practice of the council, and it hasn't certainly been the practice of the council in the last five years. Um, no council um, that, excuse me, in the last six years, the last three councils never made appointments to vacancies that were going to occur um, outside of the council's term.
And I would just add that that's why I abstained, I felt that it was not within the purview of the previous council to even make that appointment, and furthermore, there were other uh, committees that were ignored, where appointments were needed and nothing happened with those. So what's so special about the planning board? Uh, there weren't any, there weren't any applicants for those spots. So they weren't ignored, it's inaccurate. We appointed the people that, to the spots that, where there were openings.
So I think, I think the point here, if I'm understanding Counselor Whiting's point is that um, um, if you just apply a little common sense to this, what's the end, right? So these are in January, um, there's plenty of time for, for a new council coming in, as has happened in the last three councils. Um, at the end of their term, uh, appointments are up, no appointments were made to those. And is it January, is it a year later, is it two years later? Can an outgoing council appoint someone to a vacancy that might occur in twenty twenty-six? So I think that um, this is a slippery slope to go down, and, and I think that Counselor Whiting has a valid point that um, a council should not be appointing people to positions that don't become vacant during the term of that council. Counselor Geary?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. From what we've done in the past was, it's always been put out there a timeframe, when, when Sue would put out, "We've got X, Y, Z appointments, and you have this date to turn in." in your, your, your application." And from what I understood, this was not the case with this one meeting. Or did you post this?
The policy states that it has to be posted at least 14 days before the meeting. It was actually posted almost a full month before the meeting. The meeting was November 20. The vacancies were posted on October 24. And then the agenda was posted two business days before the meeting. And the requirement is two days before the meeting. So, we followed that process.
You, you said it was posted. In what regards? How was it posted? That you're going to have a meeting or that's when the applications are due?
There were a couple of postings. First, you have to post the vacancies. That was on October 24. And then the meeting has to be posted two days before the meeting. So, that was posted on November 16. The meeting took place on the 20. So, the time, the requirements for the timeline were met. And if anything, the vacancies were actually posted longer than they had to be.
And there was no other applications for any of the other committees?
So, if I would just bring to the council attention, I don't disagree with what the clerk is saying, but I had a constituent call me that was concerned about this because the posting was up for that period of time, but there's a statement on the posting page that says when you're allowed to apply. And that period from the original posting in October expired in early November. There was no action, as this person pointed out to me, there was no action by the appointment committee. And the policy, the order, the city council order is pretty clear that you have to have a new process fresh each time. And so, what happened in this case is on the 14th of November, that was changed to allow applications to the 17th. And the, and the person that called me about this was concerned because when they read it, it was an old process which applications were not open and it, it didn't occur until there was three days available.
Mayor and council, I would just suggest, you know, regardless of what you do here tonight, if, if we're going to look at the way that the mayor just outlined, take a look at that policy. That policy, if we're splitting hairs here of that, the two, you know, we didn't have that council, the appointment committee meet on the date of the two-week expiration of receiving those applicants, then the policy needs to be, be looked at because the posting was made for the next appointment committee's review. That took place, the appointment, I'm sorry, the announcement was made. It met the 14 days. That appointment committee, what Sue works on is with the appointment committee to find a date that best works for the appointment committee to establish a quorum. This group only meets about four times a year. So, everything within the policy was followed and met. It's whether or not you want to interpret that policy to say that, you know, they didn't have a meeting right after the 14 days had, had expired, whether or not that starts that process again. I think that we would need to make sure that we're clarifying that policy because it is challenging for the clerk to schedule the appointment committee, to make sure that they're meeting, make sure we have everyone's applications, make sure that we're notifying those who have terms that are expiring. All those things are just a process you have to go through. Policy should be clear so that way there, this constituent doesn't feel like they may have missed an opportunity because it's now three and a half or maybe four weeks, probably three and a half weeks before the appointment. So, I think that, that'll be fine. Let's just make sure we take a look at it and review it and make sure we make those corrections.
Other questions or comments? Counselor Geary?
Thank you. It's more of a statement. I, I am going to support the motion that the good councilors made. Because I believe in the process and I believe that the public got shortchanged, even if it was put in a paper, that maybe some of these other committees are just as important as the planning board and people might have either didn't know or didn't know that there was going to be a, a chance to jump in twice in that just one month. So, I'm going to rule on the people's side.
Counselor Whiting?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I, I would just like to state that I, I don't mean to minimize the difficulty of that, you know, of operating that committee. I think it's, it's a hard thing to do to get people to apply for different positions. I think the intent when the committee was created a long time ago was to just open up the process and encourage a greater diversity of applications and more applications and actually have competition for these positions, which are important positions and, positions that the city values greatly. And I pledge that I will not be sitting on any appointments which fall within the next council's term. When my term is done, I will be done and I will not be bringing forth anything which goes into the next council's term.
Counselor Cowan?
Mr. Mayor, I ran a campaign and talked to a lot of folks who were very concerned and eager to see greater transparency and, and understanding of the open process. And to that point, I think because there's potential confusion and I think, Mr. Crowley, your, your point of clarifying this down the road is excellent, but in the, in the meantime, in the spirit of, of trying to be as open and transparent and welcoming, I would support rescinding these applications and reopening, giving these three individuals the equal chance to reapply and be fairly considered.
Anything else from the council? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. Be by show of hands, all in favor of rescission? Opposed? The vote is four in favor, three opposed. The motion is adopted.
Which, no, I'm sorry. So, we did not have, I just want to make sure we're clear on this, Sue. This was not something on the agenda which would then require a majority vote? Supermajority?
It was not.
It was not, there was no notification.
So, can you tell us where that appears? Because my understanding of the rule would be, would be that a motion to rescind can be made by any member at any time. It does not have to appear on the agenda. So, so we're going to check the rule. I, I think a motion to recess until a call of chair would be in order. Is there a motion?
Move to recess for as long as necessary, probably not exceeding 10 minutes? Five minutes?
I'll second it.
A motion to recess to the call of chair has been made by Counselor Whiting, seconded by Counselor Cowan. All in favor? Opposed? Counselor Walker? Five having voted in favor and two opposed, a motion to recess is adopted. Five having voted in favor and two opposed, the motion to recess is adopted. So, the -- we'll wait a minute. Thank you. the first question that arose was whether the motion was in order, and a motion to rescind can be made by any member at any time as long as no other motion is pending. So, the motion was in order. The second parliamentary issue that was raised was relative to the vote count that's required to adopt the motion pursuant to section thirty-five of Robert's Rules, which governs rescission. When the vote is being taken of the whole membership of the body, a majority is all that's required. As there were four voting in the affirmative and three into the negative, the motion was adopted. And after conferring with the clerk, I believe that we're all in agreement is to the correct parliamentary procedure. Is that correct, Madam Clerk?
That is correct.
Council Whiting?
That being the case, I will introduce a second motion. I move to rescind order one five three dash one two zero four two oh two three, as adopted by the City Council on December fourth, twenty twenty-three, reappointing Evan Seer to the planning board as a full member with a term expiration of oh one oh one, twenty twenty-seven.
So, Council Whiting has moved to rescind order one five four one two zero four two zero two three, as adopted by the City Council on December four, twenty twenty-three, reappointing Evan Seer to the planning board as a full member with a term of expiration of one one, twenty twenty-seven. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
It's been seconded by Council Gary. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, discussion by the council.
Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to add that as with the first motion, there's nothing personal in reference to Mr. Seer, a well-qualified person, and it's a matter of process, not person.
Are there any other comments or discussion by the council? Seeing none, the vote will be by show of hands. All in favor? Opposed? Four having voted in the affirmative and three in the negatives, the motion is adopted. Is there any other new business? The next agenda item is a second open session. Members of the public are invited to speak to the council about any issue not on the current agenda tonight. If you would like to address the council, please approach the podium, provide your name and address, and try to limit your comments to three minutes. Not seeing any member of the public approaching the podium, we'll close the open session. The next item on the agenda is reports, the mayor's report. I would report that I will be forming a mayor's ad hoc committee on housing. The purpose of the committee will be to make recommendations to the city council on the creation of a comprehensive housing strategy, a strategy that will identify the housing needs in the community through twenty thirty. The strategy will identify the types and number of housing units needed to provide housing opportunities for individuals and families of all ages and incomes for both current residents of our city and those that will join our community in the coming years. I'll be working with the city administration, members of the council, and any interested members of the community over the next few weeks to identify members of the committee. I'll also announcing that I'll be forming a mayor's ad hoc committee on homelessness. The purpose of the committee will be to make recommendations to the city council on policies and actions to address the issue of homelessness and housing insecurity, as well as the related issues of substance abuse and mental health issues. We'll do this in collaboration with other governmental and nonprofit organizations. And again, as with the other committee, I'll be working with the city administration, city councilors, and interested members of the community over the next few weeks to identify members of this committee. The next item in the mayor's report, I'd like to thank the school department for hosting the inauguration at the Donald Gay Performing Arts Center. Anyone who hasn't seen the facility, you should take any opportunity to go see it. It's a beautiful facility, and I think not only will it serve the school well, I think it's going to be a great benefit for the community to the types of events that can be held there. The next item, I want to comment on the Absolutely Auburn podcast. I don't know how many people have listened to this, but if you'd really like to hear from some of the people who do the work day to day in the city and talk to you about the work that they do, how they do it, the challenge they're facing. The communications team does a great job with this, you know. I found them very informative. If you would like to listen to the podcast, you can go to the homepage of the city homepage, and there's a link there, or you can get these any place you get your podcasts, Apple, Google, Spotify, Amazon, wherever. And the last thing I would like to mention is we're coming up quickly on our New Year's Eve event. This will be the fifth annual event. It's three to nine on New Year's Eve. It's down on Main Street in the Festival Plaza area. Admission's free. There's all kinds of music, food, beverages provided by local vendors. And if you go to newyearsorburn.com, you can get all the information. And that's all I have for city councilor's reports. We'll start with Council Gary.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's not exactly your council report, but the good speaker that come up, Mr. Campbell, was talking about the homeless and warming shelters. Has the city decided or found places for when the temperatures get even further below zero? I mean, today's not quite bad. It's just wet, damp, and windy. But do we have any strategy where people can go, whether they're homeless or people that are cutting down the heating of their home and they need a place to warm up?
I think that we probably don't have a complete strategy, and I think the council was previously informed by the city manager that unfortunately, we didn't receive the state grant that we had applied to, to open a warming center. I know that the city staff does lots of work on a daily basis to try to accommodate people. One of the reasons for forming a homeless committee is to have a more complete strategy, but I'd let the city manager, if you'd like to comment, on the activities that the city staff's currently providing.
I think that's a great summary. We do have, we do have caseworkers that are embedded within our community development block grant, I'm sorry, our community development department. Those individuals are in the field. They're working to find solutions on a regular basis. They continue finding locations and finding housing. We also have other organizations that have an office within community development as well that are working with individuals that come in through general assistance, and they're working through housing needs. As the mayor said, a larger strategy beyond that, other than conversations, discussions that take place between myself and the city administrator Lewiston, just constantly looking for some opportunities, there is no other, no other plan in place to address that immediate need.
Anything further, Council Gary?
I, well, yeah, I'm going to keep egging it on. I know in the past, if there was a really cold day, we opened up the senior center so people could go in and get warm and maybe have a cup of coffee. And I know they've also done it up at Norway Savings when no one, nothing was going on.
Yeah, that practice will continue. We won't, we'll continue to do that. Staff met with MEMA today regarding this storm, based on current temperatures, obviously, as was indicated from those who spoke about just the, just being in the environment today, even though it wasn't cold, it still meets, there's a lot of challenges there. Staff will, is assessing on a, at least opening a charging station, which is an opportunity to dry out, be able to get some services. So, we'll be addressing that for tomorrow. We're assessing exactly how much power comes back on by the end of the day. At night, I know, I just got a text recently, so a lot of power is coming back on right now. And so, we're, we'll continue monitoring that. And depending on those numbers will determine whether or not a charging station's open tomorrow. You know, the library is always a great location to go, that without any notification for charging, there's opportunities there. We always, we had to shut down our Norway Savings Bank arena because of the high wind activity that was taking place there and some concerns that we had with the infrastructure. But we will, we will look for some other opportunities.
Thank you kindly.
Council Whiting?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to echo your comments about the Donald Gay Performing Arts Center. It's spectacular. I'd also like to thank the people who helped make that possible, Malcolm Philbrook, Bob Gardner, and Dick Gammon, members of the class, I think of nineteen fifty-one, and obviously, other people that I didn't name, but they donated a very large sum that had been previously used for scholarships to go towards the construction of that beautiful space. And also, just happy to be back on the library board. Things have changed since I was last on the board. They have a cat that's there for adoption. They have Reed to a dog, all kinds of exciting stuff. So, it'll be fun to be back there.
Nothing. I'm just excited to be part of this new council and looking forward to making some good changes for Auburn. Council Mill?
I echo Council Whiting, and a great inauguration. I'm very excited to be on the council for the next two years and definitely listening to the needs of the people of Auburn and looking forward to it.
Council Walker?
Thank you. If you're a senior citizen, I'd like you to come out for the New Year party that we put on at the Auburn Community Senior Center. It's going to be during the day. We open up at ten o'clock. That's New Year's Day, so that we're not up late the night before. We can come out, and it's a noontime thing. We drop the ball. We have finger rows, and we have all of the above, and that's no cost. Senior citizens are welcome. But please sign up by calling the senior center and get your name listed. Thank you.
Council Platts?
Yeah, just want to thank everyone on the council and staff of the city of Auburn for welcoming the new members onto the board and congratulating all the returning city councilors. Looking forward to the next two years, as well as a stint on the school committee. I think my first meeting is Wednesday, so looking forward to that.
Council Mill?
Yeah, one last thing I wanted to just commend. To me, the highlight of Thursday night was the kids and the Edward Little a cappella group and the young lady, who I don't have her name, and I apologize, but she did a Star Spangled Banner, which is one of the best I've ever heard. And the kids, God bless America, was incredible. And they were the highlight of the day. No offense to your speech.
None taken. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mayor, council. Just a couple items. First, regarding the, you know, the current storm that we are assessing on an hourly basis right now. As we go through and assess damage, we'll have crews out throughout the night. We are moving debris, working with utility companies. So, that is happening. We will be doing an assessment of damages to our infrastructure and working with any commercial properties that may have some immediate needs. We have, we do have some commercial properties that took a significant impact of this storm that will impact their business, and so we're working with them as well. So, that'll continue. We did close Auburn Hall earlier today. We will assess in the morning exactly whether or not it makes sense for us to open first thing in the morning. And we'll, we'll make sure we put that notification out, depending on the status within the community. But the, our first responders, Public Works, police and fire, just, just an example, fire, as of five o'clock today, they had already handled, fire and EMS had already handled over a hundred calls today. So, that's a, that's a heavy lift for that team that's out. So, huge thanks to them and our, and our other staff that are out trying to make sure we're meeting the immediate needs within the community. So, we'll continue assessing that. We're meeting, as I mentioned before, we're meeting with our emergency management team, as well as MEMA, as we continue assessing the storm, which is state, you know, impacting the entire state. Mayor, thank you for mentioning New Year's Auburn. I think the team, New Year's Eve Auburn, the team is doing a great job preparing for that event. The only thing I'd want to highlight is that there will be a drone show, which is first in New England type of a drone show. So, encourage people, if you want to see something new, come out and see this drone show. It's going to be something you've never seen before. So, we're excited about, about that. And it is meeting some of the concerns that folks had had regarding fireworks and impacts within the downtown. And so, the drone show should be a good alternative to that. So, we're excited about that. The last thing is that due to the storm, the finance director was not able to stay for the meeting tonight. I am happy to review the finance report with you. If there's, if there's questions that go beyond my ability to answer, then you could hold off on accepting the finance report. But it'll be up to you, council, whether or not you want to move forward with that.
So, moving on to the finance report, are there any questions or discussion by the council? Seeing none, is there a motion to accept the finance report?
Motion to accept.
Is there a second?
A second.
Motion made by Council Walker, seconded by Councilor Cowan. Vote will be by show of hands. All in favor? Close. Seven having voted in the affirmative and none in the negative, the motion is adopted. The next item is executive sessions, or are no further executive sessions for this evening. And the final agenda item is adjournment. Is there a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion to adjourn by Council Wisner, seconded by Councilor Walker. Vote will be by show of hands. All in favor? Opposed? Council is adjourned.